Okay, this meeting is called to order for the purpose of having a study session on visual and performing arts. It's March 8th, 2022, 4:04 PM. And at this time, the Board of Trustees will hear public comments, presentations, or requests on matters listed on the closed session agenda. Speakers are requested to give their names and addresses. Time limit for the speakers are three minutes. The Board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. The Board deserves the right to to limit presentations. The meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none, we now begin our study session.
So, thank you Clerk of the Board, Mr. Rodriguez. Appreciate starting our meeting out and our board members who are able to join us today. This afternoon, we have our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Ronna Fox, who's going to be presenting on the district's Visual and Performing Arts programs. And we have, none of our teachers are available to be with us this afternoon, but they have helped prepare this presentation, so Ms. Fox will share what we have happening in the district.
Alright, so good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to come today to share information about our Visual and Performing Arts program here at the district. So many times when we think of Visual and Performing Arts, we just think of Savappa, right? That's our one flagship program, but we have Visual and Performing Arts programs at all, at three of our five campuses. So we have Visual and Performing Arts at Central, Southwest, and at Desert Oasis, and I'm going to share with you just the programs we have, and some highlights from those programs, and at the end I have some data. So what is Visual and Performing Arts? Well, it's a program that encourages students to develop and value artistic creations as a means to communicate ideas, thoughts, feelings, and emotion. As a former band student, I can only remember all the hard times I went through and how my band, family, and Mr. Cannon got me through those hard times. And it really taught me how to feel and emote via the music that we played in all of the bands that I performed in. So through these studies, students can learn to plan. You have to plan what you're going to draw. You have to plan the moves you're going to make in a, in a field show. You have to plan what you're going to play. They develop and they present artistic products that reflect, a lot of times their own creativity or the creativity of other artists. And they're encouraged to try new combinations of tools, resources, and techniques with the study of Visual and Performing Arts. So it's a lot more than just getting out there and singing a song, playing a song, or drawing a picture. So why Visual and Performing Arts? Well, there's a lot of research that says that investment in the arts shows gains in math reading, cognitive ability, critical thinking, and verbal skills. It can also improve motivation, concentration, confidence, and teamwork. There's not a stronger team out there than a group of girls on the field performing in flags, performing in drill team, performing in cheer. And there was a 2005 report by the Rand Corporation that argues that intrinsic pleasures and stimulation of the art experience do more than sweeten an individual's life. They can connect people more deeply to the world and open them to new ways of seeing, creating the foundation to forge social bonds and community cohesion. So arts bring people together. We see that with our downtown activities here in El Centro. When we had the Christmas tree lighting and all of our students were there, it brings people together. It brings a sense of community, and it gives our students a purpose and a way to give back. So why study music? This is one that was given to me by one of the teachers, and they said that most parents want their children to be intelligent and successful. Some experts have pushed parents to teach their children coding on the computer, but new research is pointing to music as the way to teach children and to gateway to smarter kids. It says that powerful music can help develop a child's brain. That's out of research out of MIT and in the Journal of Neuroscience. And also, in that same study, learning music during our early life makes the brain more connected, which in turn makes their brains neurologically capable of many things, not just music. So it helps build those neurons and that connectivity in your brain. And that musical brains produce more structural and functional connections, and it improves the neural encoding of speech in at-risk children. So you'll see a lot of children that are non-verbal or children have speech delays, they respond well to music. They respond well to the speech and music and the, and the incantations and the notes that are in the music. So it's really helpful. This is a quote about Einstein. Einstein said if he hadn't been a scientist, he would have been a musician. "Life without playing music is inconceivable for me. I live my daydreams in music. I see my life in terms of music. I get most joy in my life out of music." So even Albert Einstein, one of the smartest individuals, has said if he wasn't a scientist, he would have been a musician. So here on this word, this word graphic, you'll see all the programs we have in our district related to Visual and Performing Arts. Drama, Dance Theater, Flag Team, Savappa Theater, Drill Team, Orchestra, Jazz Ensemble, Electronic Music, Mariachi, Graphic Design. All of those programs there listed make up our Visual and Performing Arts in our district. And this is a quote from an educator and author, Sidney Clement. She said, "Art has the role in education of helping children become like themselves instead of more like everyone else." So again, it's that creativity, that individualness that they can find within the arts. So I want to start with Savappa. Savappa is our most well-known program for Visual and Performing Arts. It has about 100 students in grades 10 through 12. Although most student performances occur within the state-of-the-art theater, participating students regularly perform at other school sites and venues within the community, and these are our programs. Dance, Theater, Chorus, Art, Computer Animation, and Technical Theater, although it's not a class, it's an integral part of our Savappa program because that's where most of our students do a lot of their performances. So I'm going to share this video. This video was created by Deidre DeBose, one of our Graphic Design Teachers in CTE and Savappa. Oh no, you don't want to play. It was playing. See if it's going to play earlier. This happened to me in my presentation yesterday. My links didn't work. The touchscreen doesn't want to work today. Oh, it's unavailable. Doesn't let me fullscreen. So that's a compilation of our Savappa programs and the things that they've done over the course of the years. Music, Dance, Art, and Theater, all with the help of our theater techs. So the Assistant, Mr. Spataro, he teaches Savappa music, and he wanted to just highlight the fact that the Savappa music class met Lori Livingston. She was an actress in Captain America. And that they also met Gino Montesimos. He's a film and TV actor. And he wanted to just share with you a few clips of how Savappa music did not stop during the pandemic. Even during remote learning, Savappa music continued. Even though it was virtual, they still continued to sing. And then also one more. So next, I want to talk a little bit about Drama and Theater. So Drama and Theater happen on both campuses with Savappa and without Savappa. So Robin Avila is the Drama Teacher at Central, and they've presented The Addams Family and other plays. And she wanted you to know that students explore theater history by examining its cultural and historical contributions. They are given opportunities to work on character development through improvisation and learn effective speaking using articulation, projection, and breathing techniques. They also study acting, design, and dramatic literature to increase their enjoyment and understanding of what is required to prepare plays for the public. And they're currently working on their first ever musical there at Central. And then, of course, the music. You can't have a music program in the Central Union High School District without Mr. Cannon. That's my ode to Mr. Cannon, one of the heroes in my life, and a gentleman who saved me more than I could ever thank him for. But we do have our Jimmy Cannon Theater named after him, and when you think of music and Visual and Performing Arts in the Central Union High School District, you always connect that back to Mr. Jimmy Cannon. So Marching Band, this is Central. This is our great Spartan Band, ode to Mr. Cannon and his legacy, right? It's one of the things that makes us famous as well. So Mrs. Baker is the teacher there at Central, and she said marching season is first semester of each school year. Marching Band is a part of the Concert Band Wind Ensemble curriculum. Marching Band provides the students with practical experiences in cooperation, the discipline of the ensemble, belonging, and pride of membership in the marching band. Then also at CUHS, there's a Wind Ensemble and Concert Band with Miss Baker. So she says Wind Ensemble promotes awareness and understanding of music literature from various periods, forms, styles, and idioms that are characteristic of various cultures, including our own, through the study of the repertoire of the Wind Ensemble. And then she goes on to say that Concert Band is an intermediate instrumental band class, and they must show their ability on their instrument, demonstrate ability, and showmanship in their performance. And that students will perform in a variety of activities, including school assemblies, concerts, festivals, and adjudications. I was in Marching Band, Rock Combo, Jazz Band, Wind Ensemble Concert. My senior year, I was just all with Mr. Cannon. Loved it. So the Beginning Band and the Winds and Percussions. If anyone's interested in learning how to play an instrument, they can enroll in Beginning Band, and they can begin to work on that total musicianship, developing performing skills and building knowledge of fundamental materials and music theory. And students who pass Beginning Band are then invited to Band Camp to end membership in the Marching Band for the following school year. They have two concerts during second semester. Jazz Ensemble, one of my favorite things. I played the baritone sax. I really enjoyed being in the Jazz Ensemble. So it's for advanced instrumental musicians. They perform intermediate to advanced level literature from various selected areas of musical styles, including ragtime, traditional, swing, Big Bang, Latin, and rock. They learn theory and history of the music. They improvise, and jazz is the only American art form. And the director schedules performances and participation in festivals and competitions. And then also at Central, we have Electronic Music. Oh, Dr. Taki has a comma, not a period. So Dr. Taki does great things in the world of electronic music, right? This is also a Visual and Performing Art. And it's a music technology class where students use their Chromebooks to create music, podcasts, ringtones, commercials, PSA, and a digital audio workstation that's cloud-based. And if I'm not mistaken, this link might have some samples. Let's see where his, I'm looking at it from the side here. Oh, it's over there on that side. I have to go over here. These are the samples, I do believe. Let me double check. I'm sorry, because I'm looking at it from the side here. Aha. I'll just play you one here. If they load for me. So these are created by our students. This is Attitude of Gratitude. All digitally created with their Chromebooks. Let's play a portion of one more down here. I like this one. This was, I believe their theme was gratitude for these. It was around Thanksgiving or Christmas, if I'm not mistaken. I can spend hours listening. So that link is there for you to enjoy the electronic music produced out from Mr. Taki's class. And Dr. Taki's class, who says, "The skills and experience learned in electronic music helps students to prepare for a career in music composition, audio production, and engineering, and tech support. It also provides students with an outlet to creatively express themselves through music during the school years and afterwards." So they really enjoy this class. And Dr. Taki did some good things with them. So Spartan, oh, here, he did actually, let me just, let me link. He wanted me to show you one of these. Where is my? He linked some right here. This is a loop-based song. He has some in spoken word, which are just incredible, and the students are able to just really express their thoughts and feelings. They've done some commercials. And early in the year examples are there for you as well. So it's a Dr. Taki's class. So in chorus, this is Mr. Gady over there at Central, and so the goal of the Choral Music Program is to help each student develop and strengthen musical concepts and skills, enabling him or her to appreciate music on a higher level. And he did share one sample here with us. I won't play the whole thing. It's 10 minutes, but just to show you a little bit of it. He said they learned the art of teamwork and cooperation to achieve a common goal, delivering excellent performances at school and in the community, and they performed for us at our parent university celebration. They were really good. Just play a little bit every once they start singing. So that's our chorus at Central, under the direction of Mr. Matt Gady. And Mr., at Southwest, we have our Marchy Band under Mr. Yanni. It's one of our newer bands, and just a little bit of a clip. I think this is an older clip that I found. This is our Eagle Marchy Band. Believe that's the Christmas parade. Looks like the police station. And Dr. Bussi there also does the orchestra at Southwest. So the Southwest High School Orchestra Program consists of three orchestras, the Cadet, Philharmonic, and Chamber, the last two being audition-only groups. So our orchestras regularly earn unanimous superior ratings at the SESBOA Band and Orchestra Festivals, both at the district and region level. The Chamber Orchestra has performed in such venues as Avery Fisher Hall in New York City, where they were featured on a concert premiering Mark Wilberg's Requiem, Orchestra Hall in Chicago, and Carnegie Hall. They have also performed at past ASTA National Orchestra Festivals in Santa Clara and Atlanta, and have been regular participants at the Northern Arizona University Orchestra Festival, where they recently received Best in Show honors. And in 2016, they were invited to perform at the Midwest Clinic in Chicago, an international band and orchestra concert. They've also earned superior ratings at the CMEA State Band and Orchestra Festival at UC Davis. And the SHS Chamber Orchestra maintains an active performance schedule with local and national events throughout the year. Their repertoire ranges from the music of Baroque through the modern era, regularly championing the music of the 20th century composers. And there's some pictures of our orchestra students in different places. I'm from Southwest. And Dr. Bussi also does an electronic music course similar to Dr. Taki's at Southwest. And Dr. Bussi does our IB Music. So this course involves the aspects of composition, performance, and critical analysis of music. While teaching concepts such as music theory and history, the course also exposes students to form, styles, and functions in music from a wide range of historical and socio-cultural contexts. So Dr. Bussi left us a clip. Other music courses that we offer in our district, we have Guitar at Central with Mr. Gady, Mariachi at Southwest with Mr. Spataro. We have Concert Band at Southwest with Mr. Yanni, Wind Ensemble at Southwest with Mr. Yanni, and Jazz Ensemble at Southwest with Mr. Yanni. Art is another piece of our Visual and Performing Arts program. We have an art class at Central that's taught by Ms. Taylor, and she emphasizes the elements of art and the principles of design. They explore a variety of artists, art processes, and materials, and they are involved in a creative process that requires more than talent. You can see some of their art represented here. She also teaches our Ceramics course at Central, which is another one of our visual arts. It's an introduction, this is Ceramics 1, which is an introduction to hand-building with clay. She emphasizes elements of art and the principles of design, techniques such as pitch, slab, and coil construction. They also work on engineering and construction skills through art. Ms. Williams is our art teacher at Desert Oasis High School. And they explore the elements of art and the principles of design with an artistic creation. They understand the importance of studying art history and relating it to current art trends and personal art creations. This is some of the students there, their artwork at Desert Oasis High School. Jacqueline Pletes is our art teacher there at Southwest High School. So some of their artwork. She selected Cultural Context will be applied with attention to analysis, interpretation, and judgment of student-created artwork, as well as appreciation of artworks from other cultures and time periods. That's Art 1A. She also teaches Advanced Art and IB Art. And here is her video for IB Art. And Ms. Plates also did our art class yesterday for our teachers on our Professional Development Day. They drew a painting of Equity. And also, we have Visual and Performing Arts within our CTE program. So we have Photography by Mr. Baker at Central. He teaches Photography 1, Photography 2, and they learn the fundamentals of digital photographic manipulation, and our computer-generated graphics using Adobe Photoshop. Photography 2 learns the advanced photo skills, video and aerial drone photography in a digital format, digital manipulation, and computer and photo-generated graphics. And the history of photography, camera, video, and aerial imaging is reviewed, and they learn how to prepare photo and video projects for professional clients. They study FAA flight rules for 26 unmanned aircrafts, and they use simulators programmed, fly, assemble, and shoot aerial footage. They edit, compose, and file management skills will be stressed for creation of a digital portfolio. They prepare to take the FAA Part 107 Commercial License Test, all in Photography, to do drone photography, which is a visual art. Culinary Arts is another form of art because art, food is an expression of art. It is an expression of emotions and can be very visually appealing. So Ms. Amanda Hill teaches our Culinary Arts Program at Southwest. The students there earn their California Food Handler Certification. They learn industry essential skills such as knife skills and cooking techniques, culinary, nutrition, customer service. They cater food, and they execute a restaurant simulation by preparing menu items and serving customers in Cafe 56. And one big piece of eating is the visual piece of it. So it's very important that the aesthetics of your food look good, which is why it's included in our Visual and Performing Arts. And Graphic Design, Mr. Bose at Southwest teaches Graphic Design. You saw she created the video. There's digital skills. They apply critical thinking to solve design problems. They use industry-standard computer design programs, Photoshop and Illustrator. It's an A through G Visual and Performing Arts for A through G. They articulate with IVC, and they create an online portfolio to be used for post-secondary advancement. We also have Performance Art, Visual and Performance Art, right? So some of our Performance Arts, we have our Spartan Drill Team, under the direction of Ms. Sarah McFadden, and I think she left us a short video. Just watch a portion. It was founded by Ms. Judy Lowe in 1964, our Spartans. Oh, 68? Okay, she said 64. We're gonna go with you. You know better. I'll show you a halftime show. So it's been under the direction of Ms. McFadden since 2001. So Ms. McFadden has been directing the Spartans for 21 years.
She was a Spartan.
And she was a Spartan. Here's one of their halftime shows in 2019. See the flags in the back? There go the Drill Team. The tall flags and majorats at Central, they're under the direction of Johnny Holder. Its 10 through 12 students who have a passion for twirling, dancing, and marching. They're members of the Great Spartan Band. And I think there is a short video clip here that highlights them. I don't know where they are. They should be coming in. Oh, they should be coming out. They never get tired of watching The Great Spartan Band. They'll be here soon, I'm hoping. Switch to this video. You'll lose me in watching The Great Spartan Band here. I know they're here in the front in this one. There they are. Also there at Southwest, we have the Drill and Tall Flags are called the Majestics, and here's a little clip of them. They're there in the front. Under the direction of Stephanie Niebla. There's our Twirlers. So that is the end of all of our Visual and Performing Arts Programs. We have quite an array of things that students can choose to be part of in our Visual and Performing Arts Programs in our district. And I wanted to just share a little data, but first, are there any questions about any of our Visual and Performing Arts Programs? Okay, so I did a random sampling of Visual and Performing Arts students, a random sampling of about 562 students in total. So about 373 of those students are in no other program other than Visual and Performing Arts. Okay, that means they're not in special, they're not students who have IUPs, they're not students learning English, they're not students who are migrant, they're not students experiencing homelessness, they're not students who are foster youth, or students who are in Avid, students in APH, or students that have a 504 plan. They're just in absolutely no other program, just banned. So of the 562, 32 of them are students with IUPs, about 6% roughly. 74 are English learners, so it was about 13%. 28 or 5% are students who are migrant. 12 or 2% are students who are experiencing homelessness. I think it says 2.4% are students who are foster youth. About 3.7% are students who are in Visual and Performing Arts class and in Avid. About 0.4% of our students in Visual and Performing Arts are also in at Promise House. And then 18, or 3.2%, had a 504 plan. So, I mean, as you can see, again, we kind of go back to what we've been talking about with a lot of the programs that I've been sharing, is a lot of that support required for the students who have an IUP, the students who are learning English, the students who might need Avid, doesn't allow them room in their schedule to be part of Visual and Performing Arts, is what this random sampling was showing me. So this is just very similar. It's just a pie, in case you prefer to see a pie chart over a regular graph. You can see that on my random sampling with the data that I had, the majority of our students are not in any of those specialty programs where they receive support. Again, if you're in band, it could be three, four periods of your day. You could be in zero period, marching band, first period, marching band, concert band, jazz band. Right there, you have four periods. If one of those periods has to be a TIPS class, if one of those periods has to be a support class for students learning English, if one of those periods is a pass class or a cyber high class for credit recovery for migrant students, it really limits the ability to be, especially in marching band. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the outreach. In addition, we're really talking a lot about equity. And when you look at these numbers, it doesn't look very equitable, right? It does look as if some of our students are not getting the opportunities others are to get into a Visual and Performing Arts program. And if I would have looked at our students that are low income, some of our Visual and Performing Arts Programs can be cost prohibitive, although we do have an obligation as a district to support that if the parents cannot afford it. I mean, it's one of the things we must do, especially students who are experiencing homelessness and foster youth. So what is some of the outreach that we currently do? How are we reaching out to those underserved or marginalized sections of our student body? Well, Lincoln Elementary and our local dance studios always have a spot in our Savappa show. And that's been since I was the Director of Educational Services at Central Elementary. We instituted that with Lincoln, right? Lincoln had a great dance program. We called the high school. They said, "Yep, you can have a spot in our show," and it's been that way ever since. I said 2012, 2011. We invite our feeder schools to our Savappa performances so they can see what's going on. They're not having to pay a ticket for some of the students. There are dance camps. There used to be before COVID. We held dance camps to teach dance to Imperial Value, although there is a cost. It was at one time $35. We do hire guest artists from across the country to teach community workshops. The dance, Savappa Dance has performed at various community events so that people can see what we're doing in different schools. We have freshman band camps for our students to get that extra support when they're freshmen. We have this Spartan Sound Productions website that features student production so people can go on and hear what our students are doing. And then we have guest presenters at the ICEE STEAM Festival. We were there. But when we talk about equity and our goals for equity, there are some areas of need in our Visual and Performing Arts Program. So some of the ideas that we came up with, we could partner with feeder schools to hold band camps for younger students. So maybe instead of charging, we could go to some of our feeder schools and hold a band, and hold a dance camp there with their ACES program, with their after-school programs, free of charge. Because many of our students at Lincoln, at Washington, at Sealy, at McKinley, their parents can afford for their children to go to dance camp. And we have been criticized that our Savappa program, mostly our Savappa Dance includes students who've been able to afford dance since they were three years old, right? That's some of the criticisms our Savappa Dance programs have taken. So maybe one way we could combat that, or one way we can show that that's really not the case, is begin to reach out to our feeder schools. We could partner with dance studios and feeder schools. So we could partner with Jete, we could partner with Happy Feet, we could partner with Dancing Feet. We could say, "Hey, we want to hold, will you partner with us? And we're gonna bring some of our feeder students in. Will you help us hold these dance camps?" We could offer fee waivers for dance camps. We could partner with feeder schools and take our performances to them. Because sometimes even the cost of $10, $15, if you have a family of six or seven, is very cost prohibitive to even enjoy what we have to offer. And we want to really work towards ensuring that the VAPA program reflects the demographics of our schools and that no barriers exist to participation. And that's something that's gonna be a continuous battle for us as we work towards equity in our district.
Ron, I have a question regarding Savappa Dance. For some reason, I thought that when Savappa Dance was initially started, that it was through a grant for at-risk youth or at-promised youth. Has that changed?
So we're part of the California Partnership Academy, which is a grant. I don't believe that it has a specific target audience for at-risk youth, but I will double-check on that for you. It doesn't come to mind, but I don't know it as well as I know some of our other programs in CTE, but I'd have to double-check. But I do know that we do, go ahead, Dr. Andrew Spaino.
So that criteria still is in existence. So you'll come to find out. But that includes all of the different type of at-promised categories. So English learners and all of those types of things. It's only a percentage. They want to make sure we're reaching out to those populations. And so we could check specifically on the numeric value, but every year that we reapply for that grant or renew the grant, we have to submit our student data as well.
So a percentage of the students that are in Savappa Dance need to kind of meet a certain criteria?
Correct.
They could be English learners.
Low socioeconomic.
And we're doing that, and we're reaching those metrics?
Yeah, we have to. I mean, I do know that we had student demographics, so I didn't mean, I wasn't sure if they were just low-income. But there are student demographics, and if we don't meet them, they will not fund us. But it doesn't, it doesn't mean that it's, if we meet the minimum, we can always do more, right? I'd have to double-check our numbers to see, are we barely meeting the minimum in Savappa Dance, more so than Savappa Theater or Savappa Art? I'd have to double-check those numbers.
And then what is the reason, again, that they can't start until sophomore year, why it's not available in ninth grade?
Well, for the most, most, most freshmen have very few electives, schedules. Because of all the requirements in your freshman year, you have very few available spaces in your schedule, especially if you need support classes. You're limited to your, and most of your CTE-type programs, like academy programs, always begin in the sophomore year. And the freshman year, you get introduction to different programs, and so you can make a choice in your sophomore year. And that's how it is in the CTE programs as well. They begin in the sophomore year. Usually, sometimes in the freshman, there's some type of an introduction to that pathway to see if you want to go that way. But really, our freshmen take Success 101 and Health. They take a Science, they take a Math, they take PE, they take Language Arts. And then if they need a support class, that's it. They don't have any other electives. So if you're, if you're a student learning English and you need to take an ELD course, you have no more electives. We only offer six courses during the week. If you're a student with an IUP and you need a TIPS class or an extra support class, then you have six. So it's by design of what we require of our freshmen, there's not a whole lot of legal room if you need any type of a support class.
I have a question.
Yes.
Being that Savappa Dance appears to be the most popular, do you have like a rough estimate of what a student should expect to pay?
I don't. I can do tell you, let me backtrack on Savappa as freshmen. We do offer Dance PE, which is the freshman precursor to Savappa. So if you're interested in Savappa, you could get a Dance PE, which counts for a Fine Arts, and it also counts for PE credits. So it's a double credit class, a double credit, not credit, you're not getting 10 credits, but it counts twice in graduation requirements. I don't know the answer to that. I do know a little bit more about cheerleading, because my daughter was a cheerleader. Sometimes our uniform packages for cheerleading can be between $1,200 and $1,500. We do recycle quite a few of our costumes in Savappa Dance, but I'd have to, I'd have to find out if there's how much of that, I know there are costs for shoes. Everyone needs to have their own shoes. But we do recycle quite a few of our costumes. I could get an answer for you. I can find that out. I can reach out to Ms. Brooks. Yeah. I do know in regular dance outside of school, a costume can be $150, $200. But I do believe my nieces in Savappa Dance, they recycle a lot of their uniforms. You'll see the same ones. They were wearing some that my daughter wore six years ago. And we pay for uniforms. We pay for costumes too, as well, through school funds. But again, any student that wants to be in Savappa Dance, if there were to be costs, and the parents came to the school and said, "My daughter wants to be in dance, but I cannot afford the uniforms." By California law, that cannot be a barrier to participation in any type of an activity. We would then incur the cost. The same with field trips. If there's a cost to a field trip, a cost to go on a competition, we would then have to work with them to pay the cost the same way, especially students who are foster youth and students who are experiencing homelessness, we currently are paying for them to attend like state leadership conferences for HOSA FFA, because by law we're obligated to do that. We have funding set aside just for that purpose. Yes, ma'am?
We one time had a group here wanting us to pay for cheerleading outfits. And we said, "We'll pay for it, but you've got to learn what we choose." And they said, "No, we'll pay for our own."
Yeah, and that's the thing with paying, right? So if, if your daughter came to me and we paid for her uniform, that uniform's the property of the school district and it would need to be returned, right? Just like our football uniforms get returned to us. So then, and some parents don't want to do that, they'll go out for donations because they want to be able to keep their uniform. But there is that flip side to it, you're right. And our uniforms are not as bad as some of the other ones I've seen, so that's a good thing.
So I'm very appreciative of the orchestra program, I can attest to what a great program that is. And Dr. Bussi does a fantastic job. Especially teaching students how to sight read music, that was a skill that my son learned and he moved on. So I'm very appreciative of that. But I know what has helped that program is the feeder schools, that we have the orchestra program from, you know, the junior highs from McCabe feeding into the orchestra, and then there's three levels. So that's why, you know, the auditioning for the orchestra, chamber orchestra. Now, kind of what are we doing in terms of our mariachi program, of kind of building that up at Southwest High School? And I know one of the challenges is we don't have feeder programs in our junior highs and mariachi to kind of grow our mariachi program at Southwest High School.
We're dependent upon the ACES programs there, right? So some of the ACES programs tried mariachi, I know I one time had to cut a mariachi program, but it's very, it's very spotty. One of the things we could do is partner with our after-school programs, with their after-school programs, and see if we could, even if we had to have a teacher, we could send there, we could look at going, doing programs with our students after school and some type of a ninth period or something. There are things we could do, it's going to take a partnership between our feeder schools and us. And probably the easiest place would be to see if our ARC program could partner with the ACES program and see how we can work together to build up the mariachi. Because there is interesting guitar and mariachi for our students, especially at the younger levels. We would just have to work and partner with them, I'd have to work with Linda and Joy and see if there's a way we could partner together. I do know the chorus program there, especially at El Centro Elementary at Wilson, helps us with our chorus students here. But you're right, there isn't a mariachi program. No, even at Kennedy anymore, I don't think, in the after-school programs either. But yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to work with them, it's definitely something we can do. Yes.
So I just want to add to a comment to that, many of these programs, because we're a high school district only, we, we don't have the ability to spend our resources on younger children. And, and since we're not a K-12 district, we can't align or move resources that way. So it's one of our real barriers because of the separation of the districts. So, because we had, we had brainstormed all kinds of things to do with some resource that we have around expanded learning or some of the extra LCAP dollars to really meet some of these needs, but we can't spend them on younger grades. Even in the case of, for example, the after-school program, we contract for service from the ARC program to provide that service for us. And, and, and so, like, for example, if we wanted to expand dance for young people, there's clubs and businesses out there, but they're all, we'd be spending it on younger children, which we can't do. So it really comes down to how can we partner with our elementary schools, our elementary districts to provide feeder connections to them? What can our students do in terms of leading dance camps that we can do at no cost to little ones? For our young, for our people, could get, our children, our students can get teaching experience, as it were? So we're trying to think creatively how to do that, but that's one of our challenges, is not being able to spend our resources on younger children.
And I know Dr. Bussi did that quite a bit, the camps, the, like, the day camps for the younger, and so that kind of really exposed the students, and then did a little concert at the end, and so it was a win-win.
Yeah.
So I think kind of doing more of that, I think would definitely benefit the.
Now, we can prepare our students, we can spend money to prepare our students to go and teach those courses. It would just require facilitating that with a teacher after school that could transport the students there, which is why I thought we could also work with our, with our after-school programs, because they have an ability to get people in from the community, like, I just don't have that ability. We could say, "Hey, look, we'll fund somebody, you get a group of kids that are willing to learn mariachi. Hey, by the way, Lincoln, can our kids come in and your after-school program do them free of charge? Because we, we can pay for our kids." Those are the things we could work on, yeah, to expand that.
I don't know how many years that El Centro Education Foundation received teacher, won a teacher grant. We gave, Kirsty Lynn got one every year, it's about for her gava program over there. Her music, gava and music at Wilson, but they haven't come to us yet.
And I don't know if Ms. Jones, if we're still suffering from the, from being in distance learning and just getting our feet on the ground. I know that some of our programs problems are what we're facing and barriers for us. But it's something that when I meet with Chris, who's the Director of our Savappa program, when I meet with the Fine Arts Department, we're going to talk about how can we reach out more to our feeder schools? And how can we reach out more to our students that can't afford private lessons, that can't afford Jete, that can't afford Dancing Feet, that can't afford Dance Makers, Happy Feet, or whatever the other ones are called. And I think if you look at a program that's very good at that, that's the Lincoln After-School Program in ACES at Lincoln Elementary, they got, when our students graduated, they picked them up. They passed their test, they became dance instructors, and that's why you see the dance group from Lincoln Elementary in our, in our Christmas program, because nine times out of 10, their instructors are former Savappa students, getting paid by El Centro Elementary because they've graduated. So that's something we could work, work to with the ACES programs, they're always looking for instructors there too. Any other questions? Yes, Carlos?
Yeah, dude, so like, one thing that strikes my mind about if the parents like come to us if they need, you know, to get like a uniform, et cetera. And I was just curious, do we reach out to the parents instead of making it that they come to us? Like, and then my, like, follow-up part I put on here, like, educate students of that law? Do the students know of that law? Because I just remember when I taught, this is of course, back, when I taught Southwest, we're just talking to students, I'll never forget, I had a student that talked to me after school, and he was frustrated because he had a bus.
And I was like, "What, what are you mad about?" And he was like, "Well, now I'm going to have to walk and I have to go all this way." And I was like, "Well, you know," and then we just started talking, I was like, "How come you're not in anything?" He's like, "Well, because I can't afford anything, I can't, I can't do that." And then I had to tell him, I was like, "Oh, you know, like, the school will cover it for you if you do." He's like, "Oh, I didn't know that." And then I said, "Well, why else don't you do something?" He's like, "Well, who's going to take me and who's going to pick me up? Like, I, I can't." He's like, "My parents work like at night, like, it's just me, like, there's no way, like, I can do anything." So I was just wondering, like, now, do, do the students get educated of what, about that law that, hey, if I want to be? Because I remember also, you know, people are, you know, family members, whatever, cousins, like, back in the day, from Heber, and they were, you know, a, a, yeah. Well, back in the day, back when I was like, you know, in my twenties, right? That they wanted to be a cheerleader, and, and it was the, the uniform and stuff. They were, they were getting the donations, but they had friends, and I was like, "Oh, how come some of your friends aren't doing it? Because I know your friends, I see you guys at the parties." You know, that, they're like, "Oh, it's because it's $1,200 to $1,500, I, I don't, they don't have that kind of money." And so I was just wondering, and I get the whole thing of the uniform, some of them, yeah, you have to pick what it is, but chances are, if the whole team's going to pick that, they're going to give them the uniform that, you know, the cheer squad picked, and they didn't know. So I was just wondering, do we, do we have like a, do, do the students get educated and the parents let them know that, hey, that if you can't afford it, you know, we will provide this for you? Just of course, it is the district's though, so it is that property, just like checking out a uniform. You know, we will pay for that funding, and if they worry about, what about the funding? It's like, like you said, we have a budget for that, that, that's what we're here for. And I was just wondering, instead of them having to seek that knowledge, do we tell the students that knowledge about that? And then about, I put it there also about late-night practices, like, I think we do have a system now, I remember, right? About students do get that, so I think that got cleared up. Like, for example, like Savappa, I know they have late-night practices, things like that. And do, I know kids sometimes are like, they don't want to put that burden on their parents of like, well, you know, when theater time comes around, you're there all the time before showtime, late-night practicing. And some kids are like, they know that that's coming from being there, and they avoid just joining because they're like, "I, I don't have anybody or I can't, you know, I don't want to put that burden on my parents." Do we have things in place for that also, for like, late-night practices, can pick up, stuff like? I think we've talked about it, I remember we were discussing about Uber and just, we were, we were working on it. But I know those are things that could help the numbers and, yeah. I know it was a lot of questions, but it was like three, those three.
We have to formulate those and all those.
Yeah, go first, to reach out to parents and educate students of the law.
So let's, let's look at groups of students.
Yeah.
Students who are experiencing homelessness, absolutely yes. Dr. Terry Fernandez meets with them, we've given them bus passes, we've given them prepaid debit cards to get this, you know, whatever they need. We pay for their fees to regis, um, state conference, we pay for their transportation, we pay for their lodging. Students who are experiencing homelessness, yes, they absolutely know that that's part of what we're required to do under the law. Students who are foster youth are in a very similar situation. As far as anybody outside of those two communities of students, I do not believe we outright say that. We do with fees like AP, IB exam fees.
Got you.
Right, we do with uniforms, or, I'm sorry, caps and gowns.
Caps and gowns.
Right, you can rent them, you can borrow them, we'll give them back. As a general statement, to my knowledge, we don't make that public, I guess I'm going to turn that part over to you now.
No, but we don't have, I don't believe in necessarily in the student handbook or something like that. It would, it says that there, or is it a formal announcement that happens on a regular basis? I do know that individually, and depending on the program or the coach, they would say, "If you're having trouble with this fee," well, they'll say, "Okay, it's $15 for whatever, if you, if this is a burden, please come and see me."
Yeah.
That's a pretty common phrase that teachers are used to saying, because we've reiterated it to them and to help our teachers make sure they're inclusive in any of those sorts of activities. Especially when there's an additional cost. We also try and set the programs up so there aren't additional costs, right? So, but it's always a challenge when, again, people go, I, I, they're stretching what the district is providing, they want to do something a little more than what the district can provide. They may, you know, a coach or a teacher may add something. And that's when, you know, and then it comes up, and then we, the principal or someone will say, "Hey, we can't do that," or, this is how we solve that. So the, the specific question on like the late-night practices? Well, I know we have a late bus, but that's only around, I think it's a five or a 5:15 bus, it's not late like an eight or a nine. We don't have the staff to do that, really, to then do routes late at night. We have specifically talked about, especially students experiencing homelessness, figuring out a way to get them set up so they have transportation if needed, with something like an Uber ride or a taxi service or something like that. That's not in place, we've just, we were trying to decide or discover what, what is a feature that those students need? Or even if we provide those students with a cellphone, as, as one of the services that we can help them so they can stay connected to school, connected to their teacher, and maybe set them up with a, an account with a taxi service or a Uber account.
Okay.
So, but that would be really narrow.
And also, if there were a large number of students, and the teachers could also use one of our vans, right, and transport students home, it just hasn't, I know the multiple, the times that I've driven, most parents are, but I do know you're right, at times it is pretty difficult for parents, it's just late and they're at work. But I think more, we deal with that more on an individual basis than we do like a whole group.
Yeah.
I haven't heard, and again, I've only been here, by the way, I completed my one year work anniversary, so just happy anniversary.
Oh, that's true.
But on the 23rd of February, but in the time that I've been here, back in the day, I haven't heard of anyone that has not gotten the support today, not to say they don't exist. But it's definitely something as a reminder to, especially to admin and people looking, please make sure your students know that are in these clubs, don't let cost prohibit you from participating.
Because I remember when I was coaching track at Central and at Southwest, like, we do, we do say that statement, or like, my brother will say it. But then, I, like, right now, I don't know why in reflection, I was just like, but then again, there's a bunch of kids and teenagers, it goes one ear,
Out the other.
And then out the other. So I'm like, sometimes I'm thinking that if we actually just, instead of just a handbook, because, I mean, I'll be honest, I got a handbook and.
You never read it.
And you don't read, we don't read the handbooks, and they should, and I get it, because we should, we need to provide a handbook and, because it's there. We got to do what we got to do. But then also, like, realistically, we have to, you know, accommodate to the way students are. And we know, like, Ms. Jones, like Ms. Jones said, most don't read the handbook. So in my mind, it's like, instead of, we could be proactive and just say, even in orientations, even, even if it's just a freshman, in the freshman orientation of, "Hey, guys, you're entering high school, this is what we can provide for you, this is what you can get, this is what we're planning towards, and the ones that, I know you guys," because by then, students have already developed that, that concept of, you know, they see their parents struggle, or, or, they don't want to put that extra, or a single mom working hard, they don't want to put that extra burden on them. And this is kind of them letting them know, like, "Welcome to our district, welcome freshmen, this is what we can provide you. If, if you're worried about late nights, you know, obviously we're working on it, but this is where, we could even let them know, we're working on that. This is what, there's a late-night bus here, we're working on something to do that." So just that way, they know like, okay, because, yeah, because the way I see it, like, the wording, the wording of it of, I, I, it kind of threw me off of like, of like, instead of like, "We have to do this," it's more like, "We want to do this." You know what, yeah, you know what I mean, like, yeah, so that they get the.
We want to make sure that nothing gets in the way.
Exactly, like, they get the vibe of, like, it's not that we have to, it's like, I mean, we do, but like, they get the vibe of like, no, we want to do it. Like, here, here, we're not hiding anything from you, this is, this is what we're here for. So I think that in the future would be very nice.
Definitely something we can talk about. To answer your question about Savappa, Eric, I was, I got a message from one of the parents, and she said, "No, they do not pay for their costumes in Savappa."
I wish I had a dollar.
Thank you very much, so, yeah. I didn't even know all of these, to be honest, I was a band person as well.
I wished I had a dollar. For every dollar I've given a student to buy lunch, buy PE uniform, buy shoes, shoelaces, help them go to a trip, I'd be rich.
Right, I'll just stand up and lie, you didn't even want.
Yeah, oh.
All right, any other questions? Those are some, that's some really good feedback and some things for us to bring back and, and work towards. But again, we do recognize, as you've seen with many of our programs, right, that we have some, some equity issues, and a lot of it is systematic, a lot of it has to do with scheduling and things like that. But I mean, now that we know, we can work towards, how can we solve that, what can we do?
One step at a time.
Yes. Any, are there any other questions?
Thank you, Rona, that was very comprehensive.
Thank you.
I liked all the videos. This was fun, this one was, yeah, and you know what, I will tell you that this was all the teachers' work, I just presented it. I did a few of the slides, and then they go, "We don't like this one, can we change it?" Sure, it's your showcase.
And there were some programs that I actually did not know about, I guess that have been out on in the timeframe that I didn't, hadn't seen it.
In the olden days, maybe they didn't have them.
I know. Something I could probably put on our website.
In the olden days, maybe they didn't have them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I was like, when I was at school, I knew about a couple, but there was some there that I was like, oh dang, I didn't even know. Like, I would have wanted to do the, the music ones, pretty cool. I know photography was around, but.
Yeah.
Technology was way different in early 2000s.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fox, for your presentation. And please send our regards to the teachers that provided all the information. Okay, this study session is now ended.